Well, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the November 2nd, 2020 edition of Bedford City Council. And I'm glad everybody's here. Uh, that you're with us. And we would like to get going. Um, I do not have a flag, so we're just gonna rise and say the pledge allegiance as if we did have one, because that's important. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
Which is stand.
With liberty. Thank you. Clerk, call a roll, please.
Fleeharty.
Here.
Saunders.
Here.
Cochee.
Here.
Spinks.
Here.
Janutus.
Here.
And we have two council people that are absent tonight with excuses. And I would like a motion to excuse Councilwoman Mezak and Councilwoman Rhodes. Sandy. And second by Wally. Clerk, call a roll, please.
Fleeharty.
Yes.
Saunders.
Yes.
Cochee.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Janutus.
Yes.
And we have no, oh, we have the minutes of the October 19th work session. Uh, any corrections to that? Seeing none, can I have a motion for acceptance by Spinks, second by Janutus? Clerk, call a roll, please.
Fleeharty.
Yes.
Saunders.
Yes.
Cochee.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Janutus.
Yes. And you have the minutes of the regular meeting of October 19th, 2020. Any corrections to that? Seeing none, can I have a motion for acceptance? By Fleeharty, second by Janutus. Clerk, call a roll, please.
Fleeharty.
Yes.
Saunders.
Yes.
Cochee.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Janutus.
Yes.
And we have no old business tonight, so we will get to the reports. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. A few items I want to touch on. First, just as a friendly reminder, um, anybody that has any questions or comments, you can send those to citymanager@bedfordohg.gov. And we will read those, um, at the end of the meeting during the hearing of citizens. Um, few items, just a friendly reminder, and obviously urge everyone tomorrow, Election Day, um, get out and vote. If you have any questions regarding precinct locations, you can go to our city website, you can type that in, it'll give you your specific information of where you would, um, where you do go and vote. So just a friendly reminder of that. Um, that can be found online. Um, we have started our leaf collection through our service department. Um, again, we're, we're gonna canvass the entire town, uh, every street multiple times, so, um, if we miss you, we will be back. Um, and I just, a couple of things, I urge people, you know, try not to put your leaves into the street near the catch basins on your tree lawn. Um, we'll get by and we'll, we will get those collected, but once they get in the street and they block catch basins, you know, that could be an issue during rainstorms, so please, um, keep that in the back of your, um, back of your mind. Um, I want to give a couple of, uh, quick, uh, kudos. Um, we had our, first of all, to our police department, we had, um, a recent jail inspection and report, and Deputy Chief Suts, uh, worked hand in hand with those inspectors that came out. They looked at all of our policies, they looked at our facilities, and, you know, when it was all said and done, we were 100% compliance in every single category. And that's a tremendous job. That does not happen by accident. Um, so kudos to the chief, Deputy Chief Suts. Um, I just wanted to acknowledge them, um, on that piece. So, um, our report came back great. I also want to acknowledge, um, both the fire department and our water department, um, in working hand in hand during, um, the recent hydrant flushing. Um, we were able to identify hydrants that either needed repairs, replacements, and in a extremely quick turnaround, our water department was out. Um, we've replaced a number of them. Um, all of this was provided to council, as you know, in, in the reports, as far as our GIS reports. Um, so those improvements, uh, they're vital, they're vital to the fire department's, um, ISO rating. Um, and I just wanted to compliment those two departments from, for their efforts in getting those addressed in such a timely fashion. Um, lastly, I want to touch on, and I just want to remind everybody, you know, these are obviously challenging times. Um, you know, it's challenging regarding the, um, COVID, um, businesses, homeowners, um, everybody is, um, feeling the challenges, children in schools. Our team has been in place, and we put together our team in place in, you know, beginning of March, and, um, they've done a tremendous job, and we meet regularly. Um, I urge anybody that has any questions or concerns, please go to our website. Um, we've established a COVID-19 hub that is full of information that is updated every single day, sometimes multiple times a day. Um, and also follow us on social media. Um, today, uh, actually, the governor announced last week, but today, um, the applications went live for a number of different grant programs that, um, individuals can apply for. Individuals for assistance with utility, um, assistance, as well as business owners can apply for additional funding that's being made available through the state of Ohio. Those applications are live today. Visit our website, there's links to those, there's press releases, um, and we're constantly putting those out. Um, you know, our police department has been communicating with some of our assisted living facilities to make sure that everything is, you know, make sure there's no needs or anything that we need to be aware of, or how can we help? Um, we've really tried to address, um, concerns with, um, that have been brought to our attention from the public. Um, we've tried to communicate with business owners. Uh, kudos to Jennifer Kuzma in our ED office. She was able to get, um, about 70 different boxes of, um, small PPE toolkits, and we are now delivering those to various businesses throughout town, um, just to add to their supply. Um, the city of Bedford, we, you know, obviously have our supply with our safety forces, and, you know, we're, we're, we're getting through this. As the, uh, saying goes, I think everybody gets through this together. Um, but if you need anything, if you need assistance, please call us, and I urge everybody just to visit our website. I think it was said, uh, very well from the governor. I think we all have a personal responsibility to take precautions, and we all have a personal, um, we have to be personal, personally accountable, um, to stay safe and, 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 again, follow the precautions and, you know, hopefully this time will, will come and pass, um, in the near future. So, again, visit us online. Anybody needs anything, please do not hesitate to call and stay safe. End of report.
Thank you. Uh, Mike, is the chipper done for good enough? For this?
Yes, there were some large limbs. We, we have our leaf crews out now. Um, there were some large limbs that we went by and we were able to get and throw into the, throw into a truck, truck and remove those. I spoke to a resident today that had a limb fall down over the weekend, so we're gonna pick that up. But as far as the bundles and that, yeah, we're redirecting our staff to try to get those leaf crews out.
Yeah, I had one, uh, a neighbor across the street from my driveway, uh, big limb came down the street and I, I put it up on the tree lawn. I Okay. Hey, so, let him check that. Okay. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Law Director.
Briefly, I would just echo the city manager.
Nope, you just muted it.
Yeah, we'll just echo the city manager's comments about acting responsibly in regards to the COVID-19 situation, but also in regards to the election here, you know, whatever the results are, you know, I just urge everyone to act in a rational, peaceful manner, and, uh, you know, it'll be fine no matter which party wins, we'll move on. All right, end of report.
Thank you. Mr. Finance Director.
Okay, as you can see tonight, we have on first reading our annual appropriation, uh, ordinance, uh, for 2021. We've been working hard on that. Uh, we're having our, we're having our hearings, going through each of the departments, working with them to finish up that, uh, budget. Uh, we have that prepared in line with the COVID-19 and what we're expecting from the, uh, the negatives from that standpoint of what that will bring. Um, at this point, we're also working, uh, in the tax department, uh, nonfilers. Uh, right now, we have the, we call, we're sending out, uh, letters to everybody, we're trying to clear up the records, see if people, you know, had moved out of the city, moved into the city, we're verifying that information, so please respond to those letters if you do get one. We're also looking at tax law, um, getting some answers in regards to some, uh, clarifications of the house bills that are out there currently right now, uh, pending. Uh, I've talked to a few cities, how they're handling different situations, and, uh, we'll be getting those answers soon. We're also, tonight on the agenda, we have our first reading on the POP plan, that's, uh, the, uh, the hospitation deferral program with, uh, most businesses have that for their employees. We also have that in regards to deferring the taxes on the hospitation premiums, and that's what that's all about. That's the end of my report.
Thank you. Mr. Fleeharty.
Just want to remind everybody, Ward 3 is at Ellenwood. Uh, hopefully, if you haven't voted yet, please get out and vote. And, uh, also, this one's for you, Mike. I drove by that San Bernardo, uh, and they're offering, uh, they got signs out front that they're opening up their, uh, one, two-bedroom, uh, applications for their apartments. Do you know anything about it?
They're start, they're starting to take applications, yes.
So they're almost, they're, they're ready to roll then, huh? Okay. I just seen that.
Yeah, they, that was up, um, it's been up a little bit. There's the lower, uh, facility is, um,
The treehouse.
That's able to be filled, um, and they, they, I believe they just buttoned up some remaining items. Calvin was working through that.
Okay.
They, I know of two people that already moved in over there, so they're not only taking applications, they've actually moved in.
Yeah, I think the treehouse is what part that they moved into, last I heard. The other part, though, was just
It's not just the lower section, they are moving into the upper end.
Okay, well, good. About time, right?
Yeah.
Um, that's it, end of report.
Thank you. Mr. Saunders.
All right, just want to remind everybody in Ward 6 that we're no longer at the library, we are at Ellenwood also. Uh, be careful, because, uh, if there could be rushes in there with all the different six precincts that are voting there, that, uh, there could be lines and there could be parking problems. So, uh, if there, you've drive by and you see it full, come back, because, uh, your vote is important, no matter who you're voting for. You have that right. A lot of people fought and died for that right, so, uh, you want to make sure you get out there and do that. Uh, the other thing I want to bring up is the fact that, uh, now that we're in leaf season, please be careful of where you park your car, because, uh, you're blocking leaf piles, probably. It's bad enough that on garbage day, garbage cans get blocked out and they can't pick them up without getting out and moving them. But, uh, now with the leaf season, try to stay off of the street. Uh, then this brings back to another question to Mike. Because of all the wind we had over the weekend, a lot of the catch basins are, the grates are already plugged. There's two feet of leaves in the gutters on almost every street, it seems like. Are our guys gonna rake that out and suck them up? Because last year, there was a couple of times when they went by, they only did the piles on the tree lawns and didn't clean the streets out. So, which I would ask the residents at the same time, if your street's got a lot of leaves in it, rake it up on the tree lawn, just to get it out of the gutters in case we get a torrential downpour.
Our, our guys typically are, are told, and for the most part, they do, when they are going down the roadways collecting and they see that, they'll address it, but we'll, um, we'll make sure of that.
Because there is a lot of leaves in the street right now, and if, if they do get wet, they're gonna get slippery too, so watch your speeds on the streets too, because you never know what's gonna dart, dart out in front of you. Granted, with the schools the way they are, kids aren't out as much, but there are a lot of deer out there too. So, that's it. Thank you.
Vic, did you have a comment on that?
Yeah, just to follow up on what Don asked that question, they were in my area today and they are cleaning the streets. So, I watched them and they're sweeping up everything that's in the street, so they're doing what they're supposed to be doing.
Yeah, I saw them do that by my house today too, so.
No, I've got all the big old mature trees, so there's a lot of leaves down.
Yep. Mrs. Spinks.
Yeah, uh, Grant had a lot of, uh, leaves and limbs and stuff down. Uh, Mike, um, kind of to, uh, catch on with, what, what the mayor said too, there was several residents, I know when I was out about today doing the board check, uh, big limbs down, and I noticed they had cut them up. I don't know if that was one of the calls you were talking about. Um, I believe there was one on Tudor and one on Thames. Um, I don't know if you received those calls or not, if not, I'll give that to you, but, uh, yeah, and it looks like we're getting them out on my patio room and we're getting a lot of wind tonight too, so I was concerned about a lot of branches being down. So I was just wondering, I'll get that, I'll get those numbers to you if you didn't already get them. Um, big shout out to Sarah Goodati down at the rec center. Um, I had the pleasure of being one of the judges for the, uh, pumpkin contest. Um, it was really cool. It was hard, a lot of really good pumpkins and stuff. Um, congratulations to everybody, um, that participated in it. I thought that was a great idea. Um, with COVID going on, I mean, it's just, but there's so many neat things going on, um, that the families can still do. And, um, with, you know, with COVID, families are getting to really, you know, maybe bond too much, but, um, it's neat, some of the ideas that the rec center's coming up with. A neat thing was, one of the entries, or two of the entries, was from two children from the UK, from Bedford, in the UK. And the mom was just Googling up competitions, and, and so we actually had two entries, um, from Bedford in the UK, and I thought that was really awesome. Um, we got them some color books and stuff. Um, they also, Sarah also put the competition on Facebook and had a different category for that. So, kudos to Sarah for, uh, down at the rec department about what you're doing. Um, these little drive-up little bags for kids' crafts and stuff. Um, I know it's your job, but, uh, thanks for just really using, uh, your imagination and making it, it, the things going on with the seniors. I know there's all kinds of stuff down there, so if, um, you have some spare time, check out the rec center, see what they've got going on that's, uh, safe and COVID-friendly. Um, Saturday night, trick-or-treating, um, had a blast, had about 115 kids. Um, um, had it very set up, very safe for the table. It was set out probably about eight to 10 feet away from me. I dressed up baseball. So, the baseball theme of the one, I, uh, gave out little soft, uh, baseballs and, um, Cracker Jacks, and the kids were so polite and so cute. Um, I think they had a good time, we got blessed. It was cold, but, uh, no rain or anything, so, um, it was good to see the families out with them. Um, the only complaint I have, Mike, and we already talked about it, there's something, I'm like a broken record, the speeding cars. I was very, I would yell at a lot of people on Saturday night, and so did parents, about, you see kids out, you know it's Halloween, and they were doing 30, 40 miles an hour down the street. It's just, it's, it's just out of hand. It's just, it's, uh, they don't stop at these stop signs. I don't know, I know we had talked about the flashing stop, stop lights or something. I know our guys have been out there, kudos to our police officers, I know they're writing tickets. I see them, I see them out there, and I appreciate that, I said it last week, but, uh, I, I don't want one of our kids or one of our seniors or anybody gets hit. And I can deal with the deer starting to move around and start to, uh, uh, it's, and those deer do a lot of damage, and if you're faster you're going, when they hit you, it's, someone's gonna get hurt. So, I know that I'm constantly doing about that, but it's, uh, it's very important to me, and I'm gonna complete, to continue to, to complain about it and tell, get something done about it. So, end of report. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Janutus.
Thank you. Today, I'd like to take a couple of minutes to talk about our deer calling program in the city of Bedford. Uh, for the last so many years, the, uh, city of Bedford has been engaged in deer calling, and, uh, according to our ordinance, um, the council votes, uh, to, to continue that program on a yearly basis. I would prefer that that, the voting, uh, happen, uh, in the council session on the floor, but, uh, it's typically done in our, uh, work sessions, and, and we have our discussion in the work sessions, but I would like to say a few words that I have to, uh, that I would like to, uh, present to the public. Um, as I stated before, there are only a few ethical reasons for so-called calling of animals. Number one, animals should be called to protect people's way of making a living. Animals should be called to protect other species. Animals need to be called to stop them from eating our food sources. Some animals pose a danger to humans. And the population of certain animals with no predators, such as deer, once were before the influx of the coyotes, will keep increasing unless they are called. The park ranger has said deer comprise a percentage of the coyote's diet approximately equal to a day a week, so the coyotes are, uh, are working on the deer. So, none of these ethical reasons apply here. We apparently are killing them simply because people find them inconvenient when they hop into the street and whatnot, and they're eating our bushes. If they eat the plants you are growing, the wildlife experts said, you are essentially feeding the deer. And fencing is the best deterrent. In fact, they said, if we want to eliminate the deer, we would have to build a fence around the entire city. Fencing is the only way to effectively protect valuable gardens and flower beds and shrubbery, not only from deer, but also from groundhogs and rabbits and even skunks digging up the lawns for grubs. Today, we are at a critical juncture in our human history, and I firmly believe we should, as a city, make a move in, in another direction. Because today, we are witnessing an extinction of life on Earth. 75% of all insects have died off in just the last 25 years. I don't know if you ever notice going on a trip and they're not smacking the windshield anymore. It has been reported as much as 40% of all biology on the planet has died off in the last 50 years, in my lifetime. So, is it right to have our safety forces killing the wildlife? Even when they trot into the road and maybe get hit by a car? An ecosystem requires the entire biodiversity of nature to be healthy, in an order for us to be healthy. This is exactly what we are beginning to learn from the COVID pandemic. The terrible danger we've created by the disruption of nature. We should be grateful and in awe. We live in one of the largest hardwood forests on Earth and in the largest freshwater ecosystem on the planet. So there will always be animals coming into our yards, unless we are allowed more fencing options. And how should we view ourselves and our leadership? Hopefully, we as a city value nature, that the greenery and all that entails, the birds and the bees and all God's creatures is our great asset. That we should honor the sanctity of life, to live in harmony with our wildlife and all the plants and animals, and allow for the riches of these relationships to not go untapped and squandered in a short-sighted, endless killing spree. Also, I'd like to say a word about another hot topic, the election. We have seen in the last few years, a tremendous division between people and much discord and disagreement. It is my hope, and, and John Montello also pointed this out, regardless of any incomes, uh, I'm sorry, regardless of any outcomes, that somehow we could find the common ground between us, so that with the strength of unity, we can once again work together to assure our rights and freedoms. End of report. Thank you.
Thank you. And, and you're right on that, uh, whatever this election turns out, uh, I can't believe the turmoil that's been caused and the rifts between people over who's voting for what or who or that. This is America, our greatest accomplishment is we have peaceful transitions of power, whichever way it goes, and let's keep it peaceful. Um, and, and you're right, and John Montello, but the way it is, what, what it gets voted, that's what it is, and we just go from there, so. I hope the whole country is, keeps their sanity after this election. One, oh, I won't get into it now. But I want to just say thanks, uh, that we had a nice, quiet Halloween night, uh, no incidents that we've heard of, and, uh, it was certainly a lot less people out than normal because of all these situations, so, um, I hope the kids that did go out had a good time and got a lot of candy and, uh, and enjoyed themselves. Let's, uh, move on to new business. I will say one thing, because we only have five members of council tonight, we cannot pass anything on an emergency measure, so all readings will be first readings tonight for the four, uh, ordinance we, we have. And the first one being soon as I get it. Number 9827-20, being an ordinance to make appropriations for current expenses, expenses and expenditures of the city of Bedford, Ohio, during the year 2021 and declaring an emergency. Uh, but tonight, it will be put on first reading, and that's our appropriations budget that, uh, Frank has already discussed. So, clerk, call the roll, please.
Do you have somebody for first or second?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yeah, getting ahead of myself.
That's okay.
For, for, the first reading by Spinks, second by Janutus. Now, now you can call the roll.
Fleeharty.
Yes.
Saunders.
Yes.
Cochee.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Janutus.
Yes.
Well, that's why you're there, Tracy, keep me in mind. Thank you. Uh, ordinance number 9828-20, an ordinance allowing employee participants to make insurance plan premium contributions on a pre-tax basis for the calendar year 2021 through health equity slash wage works and declaring an emergency. Again, it'll have to be first reading. Can I have a motion for such by Saunders, second by Janutus? Clerk, call a roll, please.
Fleeharty.
Yes.
Saunders.
Yes.
Cochee.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Janutus.
Yes.
And ordinance number 9829-20, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Bain Enterprises to purchase a valve maintenance trailer and declaring an emergency. And again, we must do this on And again, we must do this on first reading, can I have a motion for such, by Fluhardy, second by Saunders. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Fluhardy?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
And an ordinance author, 9830-20, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Liberty Ford, Inc. To purchase one new 2020 Ford Explorer and one new 2021 Ford Explorer and declaring an emergency. And can I have a motion for first reading, by Fluhardy, second by Spinks? Clerk, call the roll.
Fluhardy?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
And comes to hearing of citizens, and as Mike alluded, if you want to write in to citymanager@bedfordoh.gov. We'll give a minute to get your response or your questions in. Mike, do we have any already?
Oh, yes, I do, I will read it here in a second.
Okay.
Okay, email is from Brittany Jones. It says, hello, I'm following up from my inquiry from four weeks ago. As I've not heard back, the residents of Bayberry would like to receive city issued trash cans and recycle cans. The issue is not that the trucks can't fit down our street, they come every Tuesday and stop at the individual house, just as they do the other streets. I personally am bringing this issue to the forefront because I have replaced three trash cans because the Kimball trucks practically crush them every time they pick them up. I've also witnessed our trash, our trash man throw them down to the ground, breaking pieces off of the receptacles. Replacing these cans gets expensive and their machines are too powerful for our store bought cans. I will, let me pull this up. I know that originally when I, when I inquired as to the reason why it was determined that at the time, there was simply no room to place both the trash can and the recycle can at those locations, and they'd be sitting out in the front of the dwellings. We do provide the blue bag still for Bayberry for individuals that want to recycle, and they can recycle using those. I will look into this further and I'll have a discussion with our Public Works Service Director. I believe that was the reasoning behind it as to why it was, that decision was made. Now, I don't know, I know you had indicated that all of the residents, this is the first, other than your initial comment, first that we've heard from it. We have not heard from any other residents. We've, under the circumstances of the blue bags were working fine, and it's less cans for, to be out there in the front. I know that there's some that, as far as where the cars are parked, there's no room for multiple receptacles to go into each of those locations. But we will look into that, I'll look into this to see if, you know, a smaller can or maybe just the trash cans, but still provide blue bags. I will look into it further and see if we can provide something to accommodate.
All right, can I ask a question on that? Is Bayberry a dedicated street or is it a private drive? Do we plow it?
You're muted, Mike.
I'd have to check that, Don, but you know, just like.
Well, Kimball doesn't pick up on private drives, period, normally, so it's got to be dedicated if they're picking up on it.
Unless they have a private contract with them.
Right, yeah, the HOA would take care of it then.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna look into this further and I'll, I'll let you know.
All right.
Okay. Anything else?
He's muted again.
You're muted, Mike.
He likes it, bud.
One second, I'm scrolling between screens and trying to refresh, sorry about that. I'm just doing a, one quick refresh again. That was the only comment for this evening.
Okay. And with that, can I have a motion for adjournment? By Saunders, second by Fluhardy. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Fluhardy?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Well, thank you all for being here and have a good and safe evening.